Hello beautiful people and welcome back to the channel. It is once again finals week at my college. And I know that I love to watch Study With Me videos during finals week. It keeps me motivated and makes me want to do a lot of different, you know, things. So I'm gonna film another one of those for you guys. I did one for the last semester and it was a lot of fun for me, just a real time Study With Me video. And so I wanted to do one again, so I will be doing that today. If you guys are new here, my name's Emily Harless. I'm a junior at a small college in Indiana called Ball State University. Video making is one of my passions. So if you guys could like, comment, or subscribe on this video, it would prove to me that I am doing what I should be doing and inspire me to continue making videos for you all. But without further ado, I'm going to go ahead, start sitting down at my desk and study, start all the projects and homework and everything for finals week.
Heart filled with worries, no more. In a world full of sorrows, what for? You watched the world from the place beneath the willow, the willow. So many years, too many tears on your pillow, on your pillow. Out of the darkness, a sign. It all seems so heartless, a silver lining. Don't you wait, don't you wait until the morning light, the morning light. Far away, far away until you're out of sight, you're out of sight. Cause you gotta let now while you can. Don't look back, don't forget, you gotta let now while you can. Don't look back, don't forget, you gotta let now while you can. Don't you wait, don't you wait until the morning light, the morning light. Far away, far away until you're out of sight, you're out of sight. Cause you gotta let now while you can. Gotta let now while you can. Don't look back, don't forget, you gotta let now while you can. Don't look back, don't forget, you gotta let now while you can. Don't look back, don't forget, you gotta let now while you can. Don't look back, don't forget, you gotta let now while you can.
All alone on the internet, but you don't seem to forget about yourself. Wondering how it could go so wrong, but you didn't call for help. Let me tell you about the trees and the seas, how it's all connected. Flowers and the birds and bees, and all the lights, yeah, we're all affected. Watching, break, break, break. I'm breathing in. I'm breathing out. So here's a reminder to love your life that's pouring into you. So my friend, let me tell you once again, and you know that it's true. Forget about seeing it or hearing it, in the end you must feel. Forget about all you know, you need to go, it's okay to let go. Just let it go, go, go. Then you're breathing in. You're breathing out. We're breathing in. We're breathing out. I've said it many times, I know. I would change my ways, I know for sure. When all the crows decide to meet. They settle down beneath my feet. I've got it right and I got it wrong. But I learned my lesson hanging on. Come sit here with me by the fire. And let it go for a little while. So be here as the night starts falling. Let my fingers walk over your head. We got nothing to be scared of. I'd rather be with you than by myself, not always in your hands. When I was young, I thought control would lead me to an ending road. And heavy metal seemed to be the only thing that was for me. And I saw the angels coming down. And they sang a song, you sang it loud. And I still remember parts of it. And they're yellow and glorious with it. Won't you be my guide and let me follow? Can I hold your hand for old times' sake? All this time you waited for me. Little did we know, I guess it's fate. Now all is in our hands. Now all is in our hands. Now all is in our hands. It was always on fire, our house, our dreams. We were dancing on a wire, reckless, it seemed. We found holes in these walls, we liked what we saw. Seemed so strong until it falls, the final fall. Oh, I never felt like this before. When I was trapped, your shoulder opened up. Living in a dark clouded egg, we danced, we fought. We were bound to make mistakes, real love, we thought. But it was always on fire, our house, our dream. We were dancing on a wire, reckless, it seemed. Oh, I never felt like this before. Oh, when I was trapped, your shoulder opened up. I had no reason to complain. I didn't have the words to explain. I never felt like this before. When I was trapped, your shoulder opened up. I had no reason to complain. I didn't have the words to explain. Then we were dancing on a wire. Yeah, we were dancing on a wire.
The ocean called for you and me. Still, I'm in this game. But without my closest friend. Fear, it's leaving now. I waited here but nothing came. So I, I close my eyes. Cause you reflect in everything. The light in you. It shines so true. The light in you. Free, feel free to run. Make it once again. And dreams turns into ashes. But here you are still in my arm. The light in you. It shines so true. The light in you. The problems not the world, it's what you're thinking. The signs of violence, while the world is sinking. And prepare to see the fear in me. What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? I pose questions to the ceiling like an answer gonna come. Truth is too revealing, life is easier concealing. Life is in a stream The ocean call for you and me Still I'm in this game But without my closest friend Fear it's leaving now I waited here but nothing came So I, I close my eyes Cause you reflected everything The light in you It shines so true Free feel free to run Make it once again Dreams turns into ashes But here you are still in my arms The light in you It shines so true The light in you The problems not the world It's what you're thinking The signs of violence While your world is sinking So get off your high horses And prepare to see the fear in me What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's out? What can I do when she's over? What can I do when she's over me?
I pose questions to the ceiling Like an answer gonna come Truth is too revealing Life is easier concealing All emotions to the start On your heart going numb I shouldn't be in drive more I just wanna feel alive more I feel hurt all the time boy I can't see straight I've been running on the freeway Till I get blinded by the headlights They go past me I see the last me That ever will be That got me asking If living this lightly Has happened the right then? Or should I've been a little bit more focused On the place that my feet needed to go? And as they go past me I see the last me That ever will be That got me asking If living this lightly Has happened the right then? Or should I've been more focused On where feet wanted to go? If I died right now in a lie I'd have a few regrets Just spent more time on biking Instead of smoking cigarettes Wish I worked more on music Instead of alternating steps Probably should've talked more to people I thought we're interesting as hell Probably should've gotten closer to my mom After pops drawn out death I wish the best I wish that and all the rest Sometimes I wonder if I felt more On my own skin Instead of always feeling fake But my genuine moments Stop feeling often out of place And my smile seems strange I walk like I'm turning on a wig Or a faith in my place in this path But so I'm trying to change that And live inside the moment See the present unwrap Cause the moment's all we have I'm just waiting hoping the next one Little longer than the one before Cause there's only so many I can grab Till they all start slipping out of hand I don't choose where my feet move It seems they got a mind of their own Dancing into traffic like they No regard for dangerous roads Don't you worry nothing Got the situation under control I'll be fine right here Wait that light there
Alrighty, so that is kind of the end Of today's video guys I'm gonna go ahead and pull the plug here For myself I just submitted a huge paper For one of my classes As well as a videotape presentation Did a lot of work on that Took about I think 40 minutes to an hour If I had to guess by all the footage Um but yeah So this was just a quick little study with me Maybe I'll do a livestream of this in the future So I can just fully do everything like all at once But that is gonna be it for today's video I will have another video go up on Sunday At the normal time But I did wanna get a bonus video out For you guys For you guys to utilize during finals week If you guys did like it Make sure you like it down below And subscribe to me If you would like to continue to see videos Or more of my content But that is it for me today I will see you guys on Sunday!